Sandra McIntosh.
Thank you. My name is Sandra McIntosh. I live at Woodham Park in Boston, Mass. I work for the Boston Public Schools. I am also chair of a coalition for equal quality education. Before I read briefly from my prepared remarks, I'd just like to say that last year, or probably about a year and a half ago, I was asked to speak over at the Boston Teachers Union when the bus drivers were going through trying to get their contract. There was an 85-year-old woman who was still driving a bus. And the reason she was still driving a bus was because she didn't have a pension. So many of those bus drivers did not have a pension so that they could retire at a decent age. I have a pension. I have social security. And still, retirement is a scary thing. So you can imagine being 65-plus without a pension. So the men and the women finally got their pension, and they got their contract. And now Viola wants to take it away. It's not fair. Do you understand? When you make an agreement, you make a contract with someone, you honor it. You honor that contract. These men and these women, as someone noted, they drive the most important anything that we can have. And this is our children. And they do a heck of a fine job. Okay? They bring them to us to school in the mornings. They bring them back home at night safely. And we have to respect what they do. And we have to stand up for them. So who is this Viola Corporation? Who are these French people? Viola is a global multinational corporation based in France with a record of union busting and environmental devastation. Viola is currently engaged in an effort to privatize water in several countries so that they can make huge profits. But then who are the bus drivers? What's the bus driver's union? Who are these men and women? The Bus Drivers' Union, founded in 1975, has a history of successfully fighting for the rights of its workers and with many groups facing injustice. And I can attest to that because they have been with me and our organization as we fought against not having quality education in our schools. They have been on the front lines because many of their children attend the same Boston public schools. So who are these men and women? This union is one of the most democratic unions in that the rank and file are involved in everything that the union undertakes and in which an injury to one is an injury to all. Its leadership has earned the equity of power holders and the respect of the broader community due to the history of their selfish activism. So what does it state for all of us in this struggle? This struggle between Viola Corporation and the Bus Drivers' Union is symbolic of the struggle we all face in terms of job loss, overwork, fear, and being silenced. If we allow Viola and its political allies to crush this union, what will happen when our time comes? This struggle will set the tone and the turn for what our city, the city of Boston, and our society will look like in the days to come. Let us come together and create a basis for hope rather than despair. And I truly hope that there is something that you guys, ladies on the city council, can really do. Because as you see, they've shown total disrespect for not showing up tonight. If they can make you guys protest, you can imagine what they can do to us. Thank you.
Frank Nessel is here. Tony Murray and Edward DePisa. If I can post the podium at this time. Frank, the podium is yours.
Here is Councilor Yancey. First, I want to start with the ad first. And that is, do the conclusion at the end of your resolution and say that Viola has violated its contract, doesn't deserve to continue to hold it, and vacate that contract and put in the low bidder who should have gotten the award in the first place. But I want to point out that this is a situation that is all tied up with the question of racism and it's also about the question of solidarity and the unique role that this union has played in this city ever since 1974, when the black community organized and achieved quality education by means of its choice, which was desegregation and busing. And it faced violence on the streets of that town. And what we're seeing right now is an effort to turn the clock back. There's a direct connection between what's happening here with the attempts by Viola to destroy this union, which is a pillar and a most valued asset of our community that we cannot afford to lose and see destroyed. There's a direct connection between that and the attack at the mayor. The same mayor trying to establish a racist legacy is having, and having established, a student assignment plan that is returned to racist neighborhood schools and a return to the life before 1974 that the community spent so many years fighting. This union has fought so hard against the school closing, against repeated attempts to return to neighborhood schools. And finally, the mayor is trying to establish that racist legacy and return to the memory of Louise Day Hicks and put this city back, all the decades that we fought and we won't stand for it. So we say, support this union. We hire the drivers and get rid of Viola.
Mr. Murray?
Hi, that's Murphy. It's my handwriting. And I'm actually here from Brooklyn. My address is 333 Fourth Street in Brooklyn. I'm with the People's Power Assembly. We've organized the demonstrations against the Viola headquarters in New York City. They call it Source One. They're trying to get in and take over the water the way they did in St. Louis, but they were kicked out. I would just like to say, from the testimony we've heard today, Viola is in violation of the contract and a violation of any sense of decency, as well, as we've heard from Sister here. They should lose the contract just for that. They should lose the contract just for their supporting of apartheid and the Israeli illegal settlements. And they should lose their contract because of the danger that they pose also to the city of Boston. I think, like a lot of people, my support for this union has sent me scrambling to find out more about Viola. What does this company do? They don't just come and mistreat the workers. They certainly do that. But they make sure to get their hands on every resource in the city that they can. When they tried to bust the union in Phoenix, Arizona, the union stood strong. And so Viola attempted to get pension payments paid for by the city and through backhanded deals and bribery. They were successful. They ended up costing the city of Phoenix $30 million. And they do the same thing in every city that they're in. In Indianapolis, people talk about the water contract they had there, which was a disaster for the citizens there. They also falsified all the reports so that they would get millions of dollars in bonuses. But they got their employees to lie in order to do it. In Richmond, California, they dumped 17 million gallons of waste into the San Francisco Bay. And the city of Richmond was the one who ended up paying for it. So they present a clear present danger to the city of Boston because if they don't get concessions from the union, they'll try to get them from the city. And I read about the 830 letters of reprimand that went out to this union. And the firings and the suspensions. This union should be thanked for fighting for its rights and serving as a warning signal to the menace that a company like Viola presents to the city of Boston. Viola does a lot of services for a lot of cities, but they're not experts in wastewater management. They're not experts in water. They're not experts in transportation. They're experts in profit, putting profit for people as much money as they can out of the city, every city that they're in, into their bank account. And that is another reason why, sooner than later, I'll finish up by saying, in Indianapolis, the people were so fed up that their 20-year contribution was cut short in 10 years. They told them to get out, but they paid them $29 million to get out. So this action has to be taken in getting rid of Viola for the safety of Boston and its resources has to be taken sooner rather than later.
Good evening. My name is Edward DePisa. I live at 205 Delai Street in Madison. And I have been a bus driver for going 33 years now. There's very little, like you said, that has not been said. However, there's one thing that baffles all of us. How could Viola have done a thorough investigation of 800 people in a week's time? How could they do that? They show a conscientious disregard for our intelligence, for human rights? I've seen companies come and go. We've had some bad companies, but I have yet to see one as bad as Viola. I hope that they're the last. And I would urge you guys to just do the best you can to get rid of these folks. Like the gentleman before we said, if we let them hang on, the city is going to pay. We eventually have to pay to get rid of them. They're going to be a thorn in our flesh. Right now, we've got them. We're violating the contract. They show great disrespect for this body here. And that is something that should be taken seriously. If you can, any explanation that they give you is a bad explanation. There's no good explanation for what they've done and what they're continuing to do. So we're urging you to look seriously at this. And that's my piece. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Folks, for the most part, you've been doing okay out there. I know there's been some very emotional testimony with some very clear analysis of what's going on as well. So we have two additional individuals who want to testify. These are the last two that I have. David Carlson and Fred Florio. If you're in the audience, please take the podium. Are there any other individuals interested in testifying for we adjourned this hearing?
Are there people in another room? I keep hearing folks.
Well, let me just say, for the record, this is one of the best-attended public hearings ever to appear. Standing room longway, the overflow crowd, and the curling room. So there are definitely other folks there. But in the interest of allowing our hard-working women and managers who transport our children every morning after getting up at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, we're not going to prolong this hearing. But my colleagues and the mayor, the current and the future mayor, will hear about what happened in this meeting. Whether it's carried by the mainstream media or not, they will hear about this. So this time, I believe David Carlson.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is David Carlson. I live at 11 South Crescent Circuit in Brighton. I have been a citizen since birth and a resident for 30 years now. I stand here a little bit different than other people. I don't have a kid. I'm not here because I want my money back because I never put all the money in my taxes to go to bus drivers or teachers or whatever. I say, don't give me a penny back and don't take it out of them because they're doing a job that I find very important. The future of Boston is in the future of its kids. And these kids need role models. And is there a better role model than the city of Boston's school drivers? I see it not. They are dependable. They are honest. They are strong. They do what they need to do, and they do it with charm and delight. I could ask for better people to bust my kids if I had to. I would like to also show a little something here that I've observed about our mayor. Our mayor is very good at getting his picture taken with us and dining with the rich. This was clear when the Democratic National Convention came here and how he cleared the city of all people that looked bad so that we'd never get into pictures at a time when 3,000 jobs a day are really overseas. I think, and I live in an area almost in Newton, where on the hill that's called Farlow Hill, that the Saints Abash School used to be, a private school for boys. It's moved to Needham. When it was time to build on it, the mayor prevented us from having 42 houses that were supposed to be built there, which we wanted as tower houses. And his reason for it, to quote him, is rich people need housing too. So that is the real heart of our mayor. And it's time for us to stand strong because the bus drivers of Boston are not the backbone of the city, but they certainly are part of the vertebrae. Thank you.
Thank you, City Councilor. My name is Fred Florio. I'm a bus driver, member of the Local 8751. First of all, we just want to know why we are here tonight. The reason why we are here tonight, this is because what is hiding in darkness should come into the light. This is one of our reasons why we are here. And we want to do this hearing today to be either a mirror or a window. Mirrors, that's the meaning. It should show the city councils. And windows, it should show others who we are, like the Union 8751. We have a contract. The contract, Viola keeps saying, strike has been illegally prohibited. But it didn't talk also about the lockout. We have two pictures over there where we show. The one at the top, this is the director of safety and training. When you lock the drivers out, now the game has been changed. And Viola refused to recognize. He made a mistake. He tried to blame our brothers and sisters. We're not going to let that happen. And when we want, we say we want our drivers back. We want to restate our brothers. It's not because they are only our brothers. We don't want them, Viola, throw them under the bus. And tonight, we want this hearing should cut off in a very serious manner to bring our brothers back to work because the way those brothers have been fired, they have been unjust. They have been unfair. Because how could you imagine? They have a list of mass of offenders. They have so many drivers who have been ready to testify for our brothers. Viola denied it. They said, no, 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 we don't want to do that. We have been conducting our own investigation. And our contract says you have to follow what is in there. For tonight, we're all here. We want to be, our brothers back with us. We want Viola to learn the lesson tonight because they did not show up. This is a sign of disrespect, like we have already said. And I think tonight, the city councilor, we have work to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else interested in testifying at this time? If you're interested, this lineup behind these two podiums, I want to ask the restrictive remarks just in one minute. And then I will ask, before asking Councilor Jackson to make his closing statements, I will make one last request. I see we do have some representatives of the administration here. They can choose to testify or not. If the representatives of Viola in the audience, they will be given yet another opportunity to testify. And if not, we'll hear from the closeout by hearing from Councilor Jackson and myself. So for the record, give us your name, address, organizational affiliation, and a brief statement.
Hi, my name is Patrick Mead. I live at 10 Crescent Ave in Dorchester. I'm not a bus driver, but I am a union member. I'm at SEIU. And I'm a lifelong Boston resident. I am a graduate of the Boston Public Schools. Councilor Yancey, you spoke to something earlier. You mentioned the mainstream media. And I remember on October 8th, as I was reading the news reports, there was one thing in my mind as all these things were saying, oh, there's a wildcat strike. The bus drivers are doing this because they don't like safety measures. I was wondering, okay, so where are the quotes from the bus drivers? I'm not hearing any quotes from the bus drivers. All I'm hearing is this statement that there was a wildcat strike and pretty much different city officials reacting to that narrative. I saw it later on Facebook. I saw there were news organizations at the bus driver. I saw you were there. I'm just really happy to even have this hearing here tonight. We're actually hearing from the bus drivers because that seemed to be completely absent from the entire discussion. And it was revolting to me. So I hope that this is going to continue. I hope we have further hearings where we keep getting a picture that isn't completely dominated by the company. So I just wanted to say thank you for holding this hearing, City Councilor. I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Kevin Dwyer. I live at 25 Hawthorne Street, number 2, in Roxbury. I'm a member of United here, Local 26. I'm a truck driver for SkyChef out of Boston Logan International Airport who just installed GPS in our trucks. And now we all know why. I'm also with the Social Workers Party. I'm speaking tonight in solidarity with the brothers and sisters who have been carrying on this fight because we all know today it's you. Tomorrow, it's going to be us or anybody else in this city. Like Sister said earlier, it's an injury to one is an injury to all. The bosses don't have an answer for their economic crisis. The only answer they have is to do what they're doing, which is going after our wages, our working conditions, our so-called benefits like insurance, pension, time off for injuries, everything else. They're trying to make us pay for it. Today, it's you. Like I said, tomorrow, it's going to be us. Our contract comes up in another year. We have to make sure that we have solidarity and bring as many union brothers and sisters into this fight from across the city as we can, from the SEIU, from the building trades, from my union, United Local 26, and others. We should also remember, there's going to be a new administration to take power here at the beginning of the year. Marilek Walsh let the world know where he's supposed to be a laborer. And he kept you guys riding behind, quite politely, when he said you should all be disciplined. Well, he got his wish. And we have to make sure that he takes that back, that he regrets those words, so that we can get the whole city all the way to the airport.
Well, thank you very much. Again, is any member of the Boston School Department which has entered into this contract with Viola or with the administration, the chief executive officer responsible for signing our contracts? Anyone from the administration wishing to testify this time? Any member representing Viola in the audience wishing to testify this time to rebut any of the comments that you did not agree with?
I have a question.
That's it? I see no one from Viola responding. You have a final comment before you answer?
Yeah. So you know, when we had first student as a contract and you all entered the first that ran, and the buses was late and we didn't pick up some bronze and because of the way the system was set up, do you recall first of all being fined over $800,000 for all those rhymes? Why is it that Viola has not yet been fined a penny?
That's a very good question, but it will be asked in the 17 and 1/4.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Francois.
The gentleman that was testified here earlier before the last one, he mentioned that we didn't hear anything from the bus drivers because they weren't giving anything for us. They weren't giving us any coverage. There was one coverage that would have been good for us. They only paid it once, and after that, the powers that be in the city have been removed. It's the closing and locking up the gates. Now, Charles Clinton was the only radio station that gave us some coverage. Lady one, right before the first two got fired, illegally fired, wrongfully fired. And then after that, we continued to have some good coverage from them and we take them for that. I forgot to mention that earlier.
Just touch, 106.1 FM. Let me ask my good colleague, and I'll thank him for staying because he also had a conflict this evening. I'm grateful that he stood by me in this while we listened to some real testimony this evening. Councilor Jackson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I would like to again credit Chairman Yancey for the work that he has done for so long in the city in bringing a voice to the voiceless and taking unpopular, yet important issues. His courage is to be applauded. And we continue to put him in the place that he deserves to be, which is with honor and respect. I would say, as I've noted before, first, children should be on buses and should get to school. But the safest way for our young people to get to school is with happy bus drivers. The safest way for young people to get to school is with bus drivers that have radios that work and bus drivers who are not asked to use their personal cell phone, which to me sounds to be very unsafe. The safest way for our bus drivers to work is for them to be able to have bathroom breaks. The safest way for bus drivers to be able to work is for them to be able to have health care that takes care of them and does not send them back to work when they're in pain and they're not finished healing. We have a contract with an organization. When we sign any city contract, it is on us, the folks who vote yea or nay on the budget, to make sure that our money is spent wisely, to make sure that our money is spent effectively, and to make sure, to me, and this is a, and again, I don't agree with what's written here, that the contract is actually executed. That's our fiduciary responsibility as a city councilor. And it troubles me that less the city, but more Viola, that they are not in the room. They have a substantial long-term contract with us. And it is, in my eyes, you know, not a good thing that they would not be here to answer for this. Again, I believe this is a union that has done good things for other folks that are in this room, that has negotiated a very fair contract. And again, it's a union that is standing up for the workers. And I would like to continue to stand with Councilor Yancey and will continue to stand with Councilor Yancey to make sure that justice is done, that the men and women who work here who are a reflection of the 87% of Black, Latino, and Asian students in the Boston public school system. You are a union that is truly a reflection of the city of Boston. And you deserve to be respected. Each and every one of you deserve to be respected. You deserve to have a good relationship. You deserve to have good working conditions. And it is our job. And Councilor Yancey has fought many... fought many more of these battles than, than myself, it is our job to ensure that all of those things are to, to be one. Again, you have an open door, and we'll always have an open door in my office, and I will continue to fight and stand with you to make sure that you get what is deserved and written in that, that yellow book that you have. Thank you very much.
First of all, I want to thank you very much, Councilor Jackson, for your generous remarks. We are here really because leadership compels us to be here. We are here because there, because of some courageous bus drivers and school bus monitors. We are here because we care about our children, but we're also here because we care about our dignity. We are human beings. We're not miserable. We're not to be ignored or taken for granted. We have human rights like everyone else, whether they like it or not. So as long as you decide to keep me in office, whatever office it might be, I'm going to continue to fight for the working people of Boston. And I think there's some poetic justice being played out here, because my prediction is that Veolia is not going to be in town. And we appropriated, Councilor Jackson, we appropriated $86 million for travel and transportation for the Boston Public Schools in the fiscal year 2014 budget, and the bulk of that, the bulk of those taxpayers' dollars, hard-earned taxpayers' dollars, the bulk of that $86 million is going to Veolia. That's almost a crime. Give them a, give them a hand today. Now, I know that the struggle is going to be long and hard, and there are going to be other individuals who perhaps will be hurt simply by standing up and exercising their right to speak and exercising the courage to challenge the status quo. There may be some additional casualties on the way, but we will win. And I am here, I am here to say to the outgoing administration that this has to be fixed before January 6th. It is not fair to, to put this on the next administration. It was the mayor's appointed school committee superintendent that approved this contract. It's up to him to clean it up, and clean it up now. With regards to document number 1775, order for a hearing regarding Veolia transportation labor practices in the city of Boston, I am not going to adjourn this hearing, but I will recess it to give Veolia and the administration to respond to the well-documented accusations made here tonight, that Veolia is in violation of this contract. And if it is in violation of this contract, it is the responsibility of the administration to take action, and feeling that it's the responsibility of the Boston City Council to take action. So this hearing is hereby recessed. Thank you very much. Just want to make an announcement, as an accommodation, to, as an accommodation to the overflow crowd that we have here this evening, the doors on level three, as well as level one, are open for you for the evening's access. Thank you very much.